We got Steve aboard yet? Here he comes. There he is. Looks like we got everybody here, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. And we had a very interesting workshop this afternoon. One of the items we talked about was a tax abatement program for workforce housing, which you'll be hearing more about it or future council meetings, which sound very encouraging to hopefully we can get some, some housing started in our area. And I want to thank you all for attending tonight. It looks like we have about 35 participants and you can also watch the city council meeting on our streaming service on the city's website. We usually have a similar number of people on that. So we're here tonight. We're here tonight to work together to conduct the city's business. So let's get started. We got a full agenda tonight. First thing I'm gonna do is ask for audience participation. If there's anyone that would like to make a public comment and address the city council, now's the time. You can address us for up to three minutes. This is not a time for debate. And if it's something that's on the agenda, wait and we'll, we'll let you talk at that time. So it's for non-agenda items. And you won't necessarily get a response from the council, but you can certainly address us with an issue if you have one. Do we have anyone that would like to speak this, this evening, Nina?
We do. First is Gerald.
Gerald, where are you?
Gerald, you should be able to unmute.
Yeah, I can't. I'm sorry. I must have pushed the button. I didn't mean to. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I didn't have a question. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to raise my hand.
You raised your hand. My mistake. Well, it's good to see you this evening.
All right. Bye.
Next, we have Karen Small.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, I'm unmuted. So yes, I'm Karen Small and I'm a mother, grandmother and full-time resident of Manzanita, and I'm studying water. So first of all, most of us in Manzanita are grandmothers, grandfathers, or if not grandparents. And so from this perspective, I think we can see a long way back. And I would suggest that gives us the ability and responsibility to look a long way into the future. As Robin Wall Kimmerer, one of the foremost scientists today says, "Let's change our thinking from what is our rights to what is our responsibilities." So what are our property rights? What are our property responsibilities? What are our individual rights? And what are our water rights? And what is our responsibility? So the 600-plus of us that live in Manzanita have a responsibility for our area, including our water and our watershed, don't we? From the water plan, which I did read, encourage you all to do that. I've learned that we have, we get our water from two wells. One is 50 feet deep. One is 60 feet deep. The wells are fed by the, the Halum River. The river, of course, is fed by the rain, a little snow and the mist. The trees hold the water in their roots. We know that. I also learned that their needles are mostly water, like our bodies. Remarkable. The trees then are our big water reserve. I also learned that freshwater is on the decline in our, all over our planet due to climate change, many aspects of climate change and increased usage. So I just want to leave one big question for all 600-plus of us to ponder. And that is, what will be the effect on our water in Manzanita as we experience? And we don't know the answers yet, but as we experience atmospheric rivers or downpours, which rush the water to the ocean? And as our watershed is clear-cut and all around us, we have increased development. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Karen. Do we have anyone else tonight, Nina?
We do. Next, we have Kayleen.
Hello. Yes, this is Kayleen Weiniger. I live on Portland Avenue in Manzanita. I understand there are 38 people present at tonight's meeting. And last month, I was at the council workshop in the afternoon and I understood there were 80 people present. And I was just wondering, it was such an interesting topic to be able to have two hours devoted to the future of SDRs. Why were there only three comments and the meeting suddenly cut short? I think it ended 40 minutes early. And that's my, that's my first question comment. I do have one more if I have time. My next comment or question is about public meetings. I think the state of Oregon requires council meetings to be open to the public. And I just want to say that the webinar format used in the last six months shows no faces, no list of attendees, there's no interaction, and now there's no chatting. So I would like us to consider, is it a public meeting? And thank you. That's all I have for now.
Thank you, Kayleen. Actually, we've gone from 30-some odd participants to 48 since I made that comment earlier. So there's more people joining us. Do we have any other comments this evening, Nina?
That's it.
Okay. Well, let's move forward to our consent agenda. Tonight, we have approval of our March 9th workshop and regular session minutes and approval of bills for payment, which I assume all the councilors have already seen.
I moved to accept the consent agenda.
Now, have a second.
Second.
The moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There are opposed, say nay. Thank you. Okay. Our next item on the agenda tonight is a, a public hearing. And I'm gonna turn this over to Leila to explain what the hearing's all about.
Sure. And then I'm gonna hand it over to Walt Windowski, who's our city planner. But this is an annexation hearing for a property owned by Pine Grove Properties. And have Walt go through the staff report just to inform council in the community about what's happening. And then would recommend that the mayor open a public hearing to take public comment and testimony. So with that, well, I'll hand it to you. Do you want to run the PowerPoint or do you want me to, to do that?
Actually, if I could run it, that'd be great.
That would be great. Yeah. Nina, could you let Walt have sharing?
I am on as a co-host.
Okay. Great. Thanks. You should be good to go, Walt.
Okay. Host disabled participant screen sharing.
You should be good to go in a minute, Walt.
Host disabled. I do not have screen share.
Okay. We'll get you there.
If that doesn't work, then you could always pop it up and I could walk through it.
You should be good now, Walt.
Okay. Let's give it a shot. Hey, here we go. Okay. Let's go to...
That's my time.
I apologize. I should mention while Walt's getting ready that Rick Hinkies and Jim Pence are here. They are the applicants. And so they'll be available to answer any questions should the council have any.
Leila, this is Walt. I seem to be having difficulty grabbing the file. May I just request that you go ahead and open the file and I'll just kind of walk through it?
Sure.
Thank you.
Wish we had some hold music.
I, I, I know exactly what you mean. After all that, I couldn't get it open. Gosh.
Okay.
Walt, you're gonna have to stop sharing.
Okay. Let me get here. Here we go. The other meeting would be over if I can get back here.
Yeah, your three minutes is up, Walt.
Okay. Thank you. I, I, I appreciate that.
Just put you under a little more stress.
Boy, really? I, I, I started off pretty well here and I felt pretty good about this. Okay.
I just took over for you.
I got it. Got it. Okay.
Okay.
I had to press the other button. I'm fine.
It's okay.
Okay. Thank you for your patience.
No problem. I should be able to share now.
You tell I'm from the 20th century.
We are too. We're trying to get up there. Okay. Does that work?
Yeah. Okay. Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Walt Windowski. I'm the contract city planner for the city of Manzanita. And before you, you have an annexation application hearing. Now, let's go to the next slide. We have a request by an applicant. Pine Grove Properties submitted a request to annex 4.06 acres to the city limits of Manzanita. And along with an existing property within the city, the request is made to create a 30-lot, single-family subdivision and approximately 9.82 acres total. Public hearing was held before the planning commission on January 24th of this year, whereby they reviewed the annexation application along with a concurrent subdivision proposal. The commission approved the subdivision application and recommended council approval of the request. For the record, the subdivision approval was not appealed. Next slide. The city development regulations do not include annexation provisions. It's not in our code. By default, the city is subject to provisions in ORS Chapter 222. If approved, the newly annexed property would be zoned medium-density residential. That's consistent with its current plan designation. In this case, the annexation area is located in the northwest corner of Track N on the following slide. And just for the record, a official survey was done and they determined it was 4.19 acres and not 4.06 acres as estimated. Okay. Next slide. This is the sort of overall picture of the project. If you go to Track N, that's on the right side of the screen. There is a piece of property in the northwest corner. See detail map for Phase 5 details. This is the subject 4.19 acre parcel that will be annexed. And directly to the west, where it says detail for Phase 4 details, all that is within state limits. And you can see the notation for classic street cottages as well. So that'll give you a ballpark figure of where this is located. Okay. Next. Now, the role of the city council. Chapter 222 does not specifically require nor prohibit the planning commission's review of a request. Prior to this hearing, staff coordinated the annexation process with our legal counsel, suggesting the commission should at least make a recommendation to the council. This is entirely consistent with other legislative-type actions such as zone changes or code amendments that require commission recommendation as part of the legislative process. Again, note, an annexation amends the city's zone map, which requires council adoption of an ordinance. Under 222, the section allows boundaries of any city may be extended by the annexation of territory that is not within a city, but that is contiguous to the city. And there is a separation by public right-of-way, stream, bay, lake, or some other caveat. Their proposal for annexation of territory to the city may be initiated by owners of the property and the territory to be annexed. Next slide. Findings. The property owner did submit a request to annex the property. We have a record of that. Subject property, in this case, for the record, Tax Act 1401. It is located within the city's urban growth boundary and adjacent to and contiguous to the city limits. Existing services, fire and sanitary sewer will continue to serve the site. And the city can provide necessary water and storm sewer services to serve the proposed project. In summary, this portion of Tax Act 1401 is available for urban uses and meets the statutory requirements for annexation. Last one. Following the recommendation based on these factors, this is a recommendation of the planning commission that the city council approve the proposed annexation. One other note, if approved, Exhibit B of the submitted ordinance will need to be amended to reflect the correct 4.19 acres. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Any questions with the council for Walt?
Mayor, I've got a question.
Yeah.
So, hi, Walt. I listened the other day to the recording of the planning commission meeting in January. And it sounded to me like, and I think you've just confirmed it, that to a large extent, their inquiry was just, does this application meet the criteria for annexation? Does it sort of check all the boxes? And it sounds like it clearly does. So I get that. What I'm not as clear on is how the annexation is in the best interests of the city. And that language actually appears in the ordinance that we're being asked to consider tonight. So could you just talk about that a little bit? What, as a planner, what, what's the benefit to the people of Manzanita? To do this annexation right now? As opposed to theoretically, I've heard people say, wouldn't it be better to do it after we've redone the comprehensive plan or after we've put more adequate system development charges in place? I don't, I don't have a position on either of those. I'm just curious because we are making a finding or being asked to make a finding that it's in the best interest of the city, not just that it checks all the boxes. So could you walk me through that?
Yeah. Well, part of that is sort of standard boilerplate that if you're approving something, you're making a basic assumption that's beneficial to the city as you would with most ordinances. So, so there is that. The other thing, well, that is a very tough question. I did put in the standard staff report here. There's a potential budget impact benefit to the city. And other than that, it really gets into a policy matter. What makes this especially difficult, though, is that you don't have any guidelines within your code. There's, it's, it's, we're really looking at a very simple factor here. It states that if you're adjacent to the city and we've made other findings on within the UGB, service by sewer and water, other facilities are available contiguous to the city limits. It's a very narrow scope of review. Now, if the code is amended in the future, you could always look at some greater details to consider. Is this timing right? Do we have this? Do we have that? But right now, I'm really kind of constrained with that sort of limit based on state law.
So are you saying a couple of things? First of all, I don't think any, any of the councils are too excited about approving boilerplate language. It doesn't really mean what it suggests, or at least it doesn't give us some better sense of what we're saying yes to. But are you saying that under state law, we don't have a choice here?
No, you absolutely have a choice. You absolutely have a choice. The question to me is, what are the criteria that I had to look at? And this was a very simple criteria. Ultimately, like any land use decision, findings can be made. And your decision is entirely up to you as long as you have findings to support that decision.
It, it would be an easier decision, I think, if we had a different property tax structure in town. These 30, 30 lots are likely to have some pretty lucrative real property developed on them, which would yield significant property tax in some towns, but doesn't feel like it's gonna happen here. Because, not because of you or the developers or anybody else other than the rules we're living by. And so that just, I think, begs the question, well, what is the, you know, if you do a cost-benefit analysis to the people that live here in Manzanita, what's the benefit to them of this annexation? And I, I don't doubt that as you have, as you've laid out, it checks all the boxes. I'm just looking for the answer to that question because I know it's on the minds of people in town. And when I listened to the presentation at the planning commission, I'm not sure if it was Jim or, or Rick, but one of you testified that you, you see this as a public-private partnership, your project, your development, or all of your developments as public-private partnerships. And, and I think that's an attractive proposition. But again, that, that makes me want to understand better what the public benefit of the enterprise is. The private benefit is, is more clear. And I'm not saying there's not a public benefit. I just don't, I just think people in town want to have a better feel for it, a better sense of it. So.
Can I offer something quickly?
Sure.
Just to piggyback on that. To me, the real public benefits are, are really pretty clear. As we saw from the map, these additional lots are contiguous to the city boundary. So if we don't annex, that line is literally drawn at the city boundary. So the road on the other side won't be maintained by us. The potential for short-term rentals won't be regulated by us. We have no influence beyond the approval of the land use, which is just the design. Everything else goes through the county. So when you have a property that again is contiguous and frankly, getting a higher rate for water isn't super beneficial to us either. So we would at least be getting property tax revenue. We would be able to maintain the roads and we would be able to have our zoning ordinances and other ordinance be applicable to, to that area. So, and I think also because it's, it's, it's a small section relative and that it, that it makes sense at this time. So I think those three things to me really define the public benefit. I would also argue that it's probably been developer technically better interest to not be in the city because there's additional costs and regulations. So I think it's actually in the city's best interest for the annexation. But the developers, our team, has been very collaborative and cooperative with us. And I think that we all see this now as a mutually beneficial arrangement.
Well, let me ask you this. So I understood from a prior meeting when we talked about annexation that we haven't done one in Manzanita for quite some time. I think I remember the mayor mentioning that it's been 30 years. So.
The last one I found was 1971.
Okay. That's more than 30 years. So, so, and I guess, Leila, this is for you and for, for Walt. And maybe this is a small enough annexation that this doesn't come up. But I'm, I'm just assuming that, you know, when you bring in a piece of property to a city, it results in revenue to the city. It also results in costs to the city. And you mentioned road maintenance, for example. So if a city council is asked to annex property every 50-something years, should we not be looking at what the costs are gonna be to the city as well as the benefits in terms of, of revenue? And I, I'm asking this, this is the first time I've sat in this chair and it's apparently the first time any of us have. And I know we're looking to have a more fleshed-out process in place when we redo the comprehensive plan. But is that part of the equation? Is it, if it's just a question of checking boxes that it's contiguous, et cetera, et cetera, maybe there's not that much to it. But if there is this need to make sure we're doing something that is beneficial to the people that already live within the boundaries, I'm just trying to get at that. And I, I sense is it's really hard tonight to tell us what the added costs are gonna be to Manzanita if we annex the sacrage.
But yeah, I don't, I don't have the answer to that. And I think there's kind of two things to think about, which is large-scale annexation, which we talked about. We did a lot of work on this a couple of months ago. But I think the point that councils should probably remember is that they can develop in the UGB with or without. So you're gonna be affected by the impacts of growth. You just won't have any ability to deal with it. So I think fundamentally, I get it. I mean, I'm, I, I understand the issue of, of the revenue covering services better than anyone. And I agree. But we can't solve the property tax issue. And we're, we're constitutionally bound to stick with that. So that's where the Revenue Diversification Committee comes in, is we have to think about not only how do we fund our existing services, but how do we actually fund the area that's inside the UGB, which is arguably designed to be annexed into the city? And that's the whole point of having an urban growth boundary. So I don't know that this is a solution, a situation that we can really effectively answer until we really start to dig into, how are we going to offset service costs? Because we know for a fact that our tax rate won't cover it. So I could do the math and pay somebody to go out and do it. Ultimately, it's gonna come back and say, we don't make enough. I think that gets built into our revenue diversification project. And we start looking at, again, long-term revenue. I mean, that's what I think folks really need to understand, is we are constitutionally limited in terms of what we can generate. So we either try to annex or, and if we have partners who are willing to work with us to do that as we do today, then we have better control over the outcome. Or we just have to allow them to develop as they are entitled to in the urban growth boundary and we have no control. So I think that's fundamentally, to me, what it comes down to.
Okay. Well, I, I'm still uncomfortable with the, being asked to make a finding that this is in the city's best interest as opposed to this checks a lot of boxes and therefore is eligible for annexation. But I'll, I'll leave the podium, but I will ask that we consider when we put together our annexation plan moving forward as part of the comp plan rewrite, which I understand is the general plan here. I just think we need to tailor it to the specific needs of the city and to make sure that we are in the future making these decisions based on our best analysis of whether or not it is beneficial to the city.
Well, one thing council directed me to do after we had our discussion about annexation was to develop a process for the city. And so that's, that's on the list. And that's something that we can work through over the next year or two.
Okay.
I think too, I just want to remind, it's cool for discussion, but we do need to open the public hearing. And I think there needs to be some deliberation. So if these are questions for staff, that's fine. But we haven't officially opened the public hearings. So just want to make sure we're keeping with the process. Thanks.
I'll just make one quick comment. Not, not, I do have some comments about the issue itself, but from a historical perspective, I think you'll find that we had an annexation in South Manzanita. And I'm thinking in the mid-'80s, maybe later than that, where the, what used to be First Street, Second Street, Third Street, along the Carney Boulevard was annexed into the city and became Chinook and all the other streets that are down. So that went from county to city, I think in the mid-'80s. So we've had more recent annexations than, than the '70s. So I'll just make that comment. And then I, I'll have other comments when you get to the council.
I think, I think we ought to open the public hearing at this point and see if there's any testimony from the public. So I'm going to open the public hearing at 9:00, 6:30. Nina, let me know if there's anyone that would like to testify at the public hearing. Nina, let me know if there's anyone that would like to testify at the public hearing.
Yeah, first we have Kayleen.
Hello. Yes, I'm just wondering why we are annexing this particular land and why now? It just seems like there's other more strategically located areas that we could annex.
Would you like me to respond to that, Mayor?
If you'd like to, yeah.
Yeah, thank you for the question, Kayleen. And the reason why is because it's an active application. And these homes will be developed. And we felt that it was in, that it was, it was time-sensitive. And the council, when they discussed annexation, deferred that longer conversation to other areas to annex to the comprehensive plan process. It's a much more detailed and far more complex issue to address, which is existing developed areas, as well as areas within the urban growth boundary. So this is a voluntary annexation, and it's, again, it's an active land use application, and it is going to develop. So the time is of the essence.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted again. Thank you for that answer. And just, I want to clarify, whether we annex it or do not annex, it still could be developed, right?
That is correct. Yes.
For the dwelling subdivision.
Thanks, Kayleen.
Next, we have Dave Dillon.
Hi. Okay, that, the the obvious things, the benefits of the city, I mean, they're self-evident, a little more tax money, as low as it's going to be, more water sales, system development charges and so forth. But being a Machiavellian thinker that I am, you know, we might want to allow the annexation as a defensive measure, because if we don't annex, we're going to have thirty, a possible thirty new short-term rentals right there on the edge of the city. Because they could do whatever they want. All, all of those places could be short-term rentals. Neakonny's having that problem right now. There's no control on county properties for short-term rentals. So if we bring them into the city, we've got some control over that. So I just toss that out, because excess short-term rentals is sort of the third rail of Manzanita thinking.
Thanks, Dave. Do you have anybody else?
Yeah, next we have C.C. Kennedy.
Hi, can you hear me? Hi, this is Carol. This is Carol. And my question is, is it, is it a foregone conclusion that these, like Leila, you were saying that these homes will be developed regardless of whether or not we annex them? And I'd like to address this question to Rick. Hi. Are these homes going to be developed regardless of whether we annex the property or not?
You want to answer that, Leila? I, I think.
Well, I was going to ask Rick.
Okay, is Rick there? Do you want to answer?
I can say.
Yep, I'm here. And the answer to your question is yes. It is, it is not. And I'll clarify something as well. All, all thirty homes that were approved by the Planning Commission are not in the annexed area. There are, there are fewer than that. It's approximately half, maybe a little bit less than that. So most of the homes that were approved are within the city limits. And the reason that the answer to the question is yes, is this is literally a continuation of the street and this particular part of the development. So that's why, yeah, the answer to your question, Carol, is, is yes, we will continue. We would, I will also add that we share your concerns and Leila's concerns about the services and what could be there. It is not our intention to create a short-term rental zone, so to speak. We are perfectly happy to live within the city's short-term rental ordinance. So that is not a problem. However, if the people that buy these homes and build them are allowed, as you can imagine, Jim and I have no control over what, what they do. And that is one of the reasons that we think the city should have that control. Thank you.
So, so to clarify then, this would be a continuation of the Highlands along the bluff and up above the city, all the way over to Leneda Avenue? I know that the Reinhardt House is up there, but this would be between the Reinhardt House and overlooking the bluff? Is that where the homes would be developed?
Yeah, the homes are contiguous or next to Harry Reinhardt's property up there at the top of it. On the south, on the south side, not the north.
Okay. And Rick, have any of these homes or lots been sold already?
No, they have not. We're, we're still working with, with all of this. So no. In fact, you can't, you can't really sell them and close escrow until you record the plat, and we're nowhere near that yet.
Okay, so going back then to Leila. Leila, could I ask you, has it been determined that Manzanita needs to have, this ties into some of the other things that people are saying. Do we need, has there been an ordinance that says that we need to have another series of high-end homes? I mean, there's lots of housing needs within the city, and especially for workforce housing. But I'm just wondering, you know, here we go again, building big houses, and we're really not dealing with the, the needs for, you know, a few more shops, smaller homes that are more affordable. These, these, to me, sound like they'd be million-dollar homes.
Um. Is there a question, Carol? I mean, I think the answer to that is, is that this is what is, the developers are proposing to build and are entitled to build. I will say that the city, in our work session, just gave me direction to move forward with a workforce housing tax abatement. So that's one way that the city is starting to move forward in addressing this really important issue. I, I would also argue that, you know, any housing is, is good. But we don't actually control what happens on these properties. Our job is to is not that. We, we are responsible for ensuring that the zoning ordinance is being administered appropriately and that the applicants are meeting those terms, and that's what we've done. So that's, that's, that's where it's at. But the city is working towards addressing workforce housing. And I know that this is just one piece of a much larger plan for the site. And having engaged with both Rick and Jim, I know that there's, there's some interest and some creativity brewing there. So it's not my place to speak about what that future looks like. But, you know, they are entitled to this, and our job is to just make sure that what they're proposing meets the tenants of our, our ordinance. And they do. Thanks, Carol.
Okay, next we have Karen Small.
Yeah, thinking of water, I had the quest, I have a question of, if it's annexed, does that make a difference as to whether Manzanita provides water to these houses?
We have done both. So we have provided water, and then we charge a higher rate. So the Pine Ridge community is in our UGB and is on city water. So, yeah, either way, they would likely get access to our water system.
Okay, and just in reading the water plan, I didn't see, you know, in the projections they make about the capacity of the, the water that we get. I didn't see anything in there about increasing the the number of, of, certainly the whole development was in there, but not the increasing more. So I think that needs to be looked at. And I'm sure, I hope that the council members have read the water plan and understand it. So just a question.
Okay, next we have Linda.
Hi, this is actually Mark on Linda's line. Is that okay?
No. It's okay, Mark.
Okay. As someone who lives on the boundary on EPO between county and city lines, so their county properties, you know, twenty feet away from me. I think Dave Dillon's comment is well-taken, that it would be nice and important to have urban growth boundary property annexed and subject to Manzanita rules. For, if nothing else, for those of us who live cheek by dawg with our friendly and wonderful county neighbors, it would be great to have them as city taxpayers and those who need to follow our city rules. And of course, voting. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, next we have Kayleen again.
Okay, yes, I just, I heard a couple people mention STRs and that if we don't annex it, there might be thirty STRs. So that made me think, so as we're adding more houses up there in the Highlands, we are still adding more STRs, because, I mean, they'll count in the seventeen-point-five percent, right?
Yeah, any new housing stock added to the zones that are capped get added to the denominator and is what's used to determine the number of permits that would be issued under the cap.
Okay, so, yeah, so there could be more STRs up there, or they'll be somewhere else, like down here at the beach. But there'll be more STRs then. All right, thank you.
Okay, next we have C.C. Kennedy again.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to finish my thought before I was cut off again. And, you know, I don't appreciate that, to be cut off or muted. But my thought was, is that once again, Manzanita is falling into the thing of we're beholden for something without having planned or thought it through. And so I'm just concerned that we're not really thinking of what the community needs, but we're responding to a request from some developers, which I know, I've, I've talked with Rick before, and I know he's a great guy and everything, but we're putting the cart before the horse. So that's my, my final comment. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Donna Miller.
Hi, good evening. I want to ask Jim and Rick this question, because this is, like Leila just said, you know, there's going to be a lot more of this in this whole urban growth, the Highlands area. There's going to be more and more annexation. And so Jim and Rick, what is the benefit to you guys, to your company, to your development by annexing to Manzanita?
Jim, you want to answer? You want me to answer?
I'll answer that.
All right.
What is the advantage for us to annex? To be honest with you, short-term rentals in the neighborhood next to our, our current lots, that we've heard over and over and over again, that that's not what anybody wants. And we've come around. We, you know, we, we agree with that and want to, to try to limit that if we can. Other than that, is there an advantage to us? Rick, I don't know what else.
Well, there must have been some motivation for every time you put in a request to annex.
Well, Donna, yeah, let me, if it's okay, I'll grab that one. Donna, first of all, this is our first annexation request, just to let you know. Everything else is within city limits. And the reason, it really comes back back to what we started. As you, as everyone in the city knows, Jim and I have had a vision for this property. Jim, in particular, has had a vision for it for a very long time. And we're just trying to figure out what vision works. The property's been zoned. It is zoned for residential. It's been zoned for residential for decades. And as, as Jim is a Manzanita resident, and, and I was, and personally raised my kids there, we feel like we want to be able to have a vision that will be good for that land as it's developed. And it will be developed. If we sold the land tomorrow to somebody else, it would still end up getting developed. So the thought, the, the benefit, if you, if you want to look at it that way, is that we've got a vision for what we would like to do with the property. That vision was altered after the initial vision was, was shared with the city, and the city really did not think that was in the city's best interest. We listened, we heard, we've come back, we've done it differently. And this is part of that vision. I mean, it really is all about what, what this, how to make this land residential and how to bring it into Manzanita to continue Manzanita, which is what we're trying to do. If that makes sense.
Okay. And can, can you still hear me?
Yes, Donna.
Okay, so this is four-point-one acres. So in your vision and in your plan, how many more annexations? How many more acres are we talking about? I know it's one step at a time.
Actually, we aren't talking four acres. What's the total? Thirteen lots, isn't it, Rick?
Oh, I thought he said thirty.
Well, in Phase Five, which is in the county, in the UGB, I think there's it might be fifteen, but no more than that. And that is I'm trying, I'm trying to remember the total acres in just the UGB. But there's another.
Total of the whole property?
No, I know there's, there's thirty-three acres total in, of the R2 property in the UGB. And I think this is four acres of it or close to that. So how many more? What, if we want to continue to include it in the city, I think that, that as it's planned, which it is not right now, we're working on it. But when it is planned, we will ask to add that because I feel, or we feel, that it adds to the community.
Other than numbers?
Well, people want to come here, whether we want them to or not, you know? And it's going to continue, whether it's Rick and I or somebody else, it's gonna happen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next we have C.C. Kennedy again.
You know, I've been.
I'm sorry, you guys, that was a mistake. That was a mistake. I, I was done. Thank you.
Okay, we're having several people come back in two or three times. And, and if someone's new, hasn't spoken, would like to speak at the public hearing, we'll go with that. And then I'm going to call the hearing off, and we're going to move forward.
Okay, we have one more. Susan Hayden.
Okay.
Good evening. I would simply like to echo Commissioner Spengman's statement. What does it do for the community? What does it do for the community, not just tax record revenues, but the everyday people in the community? And it's very encouraging to think that you are looking at a workforce housing tax abatement, and we look to see more about that. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing and take us back to the console. I know Walt mentioned a minute ago that we're going to have to make an amendment to the resolution as to the size of the acreage. I also noticed on there that, I think we have a date wrong. Shows the planning commission approved this annexation in January, but it says 2021, and I believe it was 2022, just a few months ago. So we'll have to make that correction too. Any further discussion with the, with the council members?
Mayor, I, I did want to make a couple of just quick comments. And I guess many of them towards what Councilmember Spigman had mentioned earlier. And part of that, Jerry, is related to what the service demands are going to be for these lots, if they in fact are annexed. It's been my experience that when you're dealing with single-family residential structures, particularly in an area where you have a special district fire department, the actual workload to city services is not too significant. If we were talking about commercial or industrial property, that requires a great deal of interaction with city services and fire department and the police department and all the different services that the city provides, that's a whole different story. But when you're talking about single-family dwellings, they just don't generate neither the cost nor the service demands that you might expect to see in a commercial or industrial. We just don't have that in Manzanita. So I mean, everything we're going to be dealing with, for the most part, is single-family.
But the single-family.
In the other comment I'll make. In the other comment I'll make, as I look at it, I would prefer to have control over the parcel than not have control over the parcel, if in fact, as it's been indicated, that there'll be development on the part, on the property regardless. That's part of it, the short-term rentals.
We're losing this.
It is just having control because the county has different standards. And if you allow if you allow the property to go into, into, now to get the portion that's outside the city annex, you've got to have the appropriate approval of the new homeowners or the new lot owners. A whole different ballgame than having a, a single source coming in and saying, I'd like to annex this parcel. To go back into the future.
Losing you, Steve.
Again, after the houses have already been built and you've got a bunch of new owners, it's just complex and I'm sorry, I have a lot of words of wisdom. Anyway, I, I do believe that we're, we are better off as a city and that we have the benefit of having a single property owner bringing us a proposal than to expect to go back at some future date and have 30 different property owners coming to us and, and either have them saying we don't want to and have them saying we want to, and it is a messy affair. I've been there.
Well, we've got a tough connection, Steve. We heard you, but it was a little garbled. The, yeah, I see this as, as I understand, it's 30 properties. All 30 properties are not, that's the size of the whole project, and there's going to be half of those roughly outside in the urban growth boundary. And it'd just be nice to control those under our short-term rental ordinance and the, and the freeze that we're going to be talking about here a little later tonight. Also, it just seems real cumbersome to me if you have a police issue going on in that little subdivision of 30 homes, and the issue's taking place just across the city line. We don't provide services to that home. And how do you deal with those issues? It sounds like a challenge to me by not doing this, I guess, is what I'm saying. Any other questions from the council here?
Can you? I'm just going to reiterate that I think I hear, well, first of all, I certainly agree that the developers have a right to develop the property, and I agree with the comment that development's going to happen no matter what we do tonight. I still have not heard a clear benefit. I've heard various sort of defensive moves that people perceive we're making by doing this. I think we need a better reason than defense. I think when you annex property, there should be a tangible benefit to the community that may exist here, and I just haven't heard it articulated. And honestly, if that phrase wasn't in the ordinance, I'd vote for the ordinance. But rather than vote against the ordinance, when my time comes, I'll abstain because I can't, I can't sit here tonight and make a finding that this is in the best interest of the city. That doesn't mean I'm against people moving to the coast and living in nice houses. It just means that on this application, I don't see any tangible benefit to the city. And, and honestly, when we talk about being able to control STRs up there, that's great, but that sort of drives home the point. We, in this city, we live on five times as much STR revenue as we do property tax revenue. So we're going to be getting very, very minor revenue from these new homes up there relative to the burden that any development of this size puts on any small town. I know it's not an issue right here tonight, but obviously Classic Street is going to have a whole lot more traffic on it at some point. It's going to cost a whole lot of money to rebuild that street or get it up to snuff. It's dangerous now. It's curvy. People are walking on it. It gets flooded. You have to drive around a puddle. You're hitting dogs and bikers if you're not paying attention. So anyway, there are a lot of issues that Manzanita has got to come to terms with and pay for. And so I, because this is probably the first of a series of annexation requests, not necessarily from these developers, but perhaps from some others. I just think that as we move towards a more permanent annexation process in the city, we need to be mindful of being able to demonstrate to the community why we are doing this. Not because growth is inevitable, but because growth in this instance is a good thing, a smart thing, a wise thing. And, and I, I don't see it here from the city's perspective. I see it from the, the perspective of the developers. I will say this, so the developers at the planning commission meeting, and I think Leila was referring to this moments ago, there was discussion, which was very encouraging and very intriguing by, I think it was Jim, about plans to do something regarding the affordability of housing in the community. And that's the kind of, sort of win-win situation that I'd like to hear more about at some point. Obviously, this might not be the time, but I think that that would be a demonstration to the community of where this partnership really does make sense and is a bilateral agreement or arrangement. And so I just don't hear right now the clear, tangible best interests of the community being expressed. And so for that reason alone, I have to abstain on the, when we get to the vote.
If there's no further discussion, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve ordinance 2201 on the annexation.
Mayor, you'll need to read that by title. And just to remind folks, ordinances were required to read by title twice. So we'll have to come back next month for the second reading.
Okay, so whoever's going to make the motion is going to have to read the title.
Mike? Am I, am I muted?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thanks. I will recuse myself, Mike. I haven't represented the applicant for, for a few years in real estate, but I have represented two buyers up there over the last couple of years. A very small percentage of my work, probably about 3%, but I, and I don't have strong feelings one way or another on this application. I look very much forward participating in, you know, forming an actual annexation policy for the city, but I'll recuse myself for voting on this one.
I need a motion then from Linda or Steve.
I, I wasn't prepared to make the motion, but I'm looking for the actual language. Maybe Linda has it. I don't, you're muted, Linda, if you're trying to speak. I'm happy to make the motion and a couple of comments before I do. One, I understand Councilmember Spigman concerns. I certainly do. And prevent
You had a really bad.
actions for the community and some, I'm sorry, I wished I, I wished I could explain it. Linda, are you, because of my connection, are you in a position to make a motion? Or do I need to make a motion to approve? She's not. She's muted.
Linda, you're muted. Linda, we can't hear you. You're muted. I just seem, I think she's.
Okay. I got, I got it. I'm on a different page. So, okay, I think I'm ready. Okay. Council ordinance number 22/01, an ordinance of the City of Manzanita, Oregon, annexing and zoning property following consent filed with the city council by landowners in said area pursuant to ORS 222.120 and ORS 222.170, Pine Grove Properties, Inc.
Steve, can you make the second then?
A second? Second. I'm trying.
Okay. The movement second to, to approve ordinance 2201, all in favor, say aye. Aye, and Hans is abstained. And what position do you want to take, Jerry?
I'm going to abstain there.
And so we have two extensions, and the motion passes three with two exemptions. Okay, we're a little behind schedule, folks. We're going to move forward now. The next item on the agenda, which is we have the people from Tillamook Bay Community College here to talk about the bond issue. There he is. Ross.
Yes, Mike, I'm here.
Hi, I, I think I'll just give you the floor. I'll give you a few minutes to tell us about what's coming up on the ballot.
Okay, thank you so much, Mike. Good evening, everyone. I'm Ross Tomlin. I'm the president of Tillamook Bay Community College. And thanks very much for giving me a few minutes in your meeting to let you know about a project that TBCC is working on. The college developed a new facilities master plan last year that includes a proposed new healthcare education building that would be located on our existing campus there on Third Street, just across our driveway on land that's already owned by the college. The project is being proposed after we conducted a study that included input from over 400 Tillamook County leaders and residents. The collected data show the need for workforce training in our county, as well as a place for community events and meetings. So with the need for our healthcare workers nationally, including Tillamook County, especially for registered nurses, TBCC decided to focus this new building on healthcare education. Growing our own workers in these high-need fields is a priority for many Tillamook County employers, and the college is working to provide training in more areas to fill this need. The new proposed building would include specialized lab space for existing programs like our EMT, medical assisting and lobotomy, as well as new healthcare programs that we plan to develop. Nursing will be the main new program, as we are the only community college in Oregon currently that does not have its own nursing program. Our students currently have to attend Oregon Coast Community College in Newport for their nursing training. The proposed new building will also contain a large 360-seat community event center that will be a flexible space that can be divided into three smaller rooms for classes, community meetings, or events. The proposed new building will cost approximately $22.4 million. The college has already been approved for an $8 million matching grant from the state legislature that has to be used within five years to get a bond for the remaining $14.4 million that we need to construct the building. If approved, homeowners would be assessed an estimated $19 per $1,000 tax on assessed property value for the next 20-year duration. And this would cover also the remaining five years for the current building bond, along with in paying off the new building. So I want to be clear that I'm not advocating for the bond measure. I'm simply providing you with some important information as elected officials and community members to ensure that you're aware of what is going on within our community. We want to inform as many people throughout the county as about this project, so voters are informed about what is being proposed and how it would be paid for. I also do have Chris Weber in the audience from our Yes for TBCC committee. And he was wanting to make a, a statement after mine, if, if that would be possible, to bring him in. And then I would open it up for questions.
And I don't see him in there. Can you raise your hand, Chris?
Maybe he might have had to have left.
He might have gave up.
Okay, that's all right.
Is anybody on the council that have a question for Ross on this issue?
Well, I really appreciate your time letting you give me the chance to let you know about it.
Yeah, thanks for joining us tonight and good luck.
All right, thank you very much.
Bye.
Take care.
We do have one hand raised. I don't know if this is Chris Kwanney's Club Tillamook.
Could be.
We'll try it.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Chris.
Thank you very much. I, I, yeah, I actually have my Zoom connection through the Kwanis Club of Tillamook, so I guess.
We almost missed you. We'll give you a few minutes, make some comments if you like.
Okay, I would just like to emphasize that I think that this is a very important issue to Tillamook County. I know many of you know that the Haylen Bay House up in your area closed, and part of the reason that that, that closed was because they could not get employees to work. They had to go out and get traveling nurses to come in, and it's very expensive. And I think we need to understand that if we train our people here locally who live here, that they will stay here. We have experience with the medical field and people come, we bring them in, they work here for a short period of time, and then they find opportunity elsewhere where they can't find a place to live. As I've been listening, you've been talking about workforce housing, and that's a real issue. But if they live here and they train here, they tend to stay here. So I just encourage all of you to vote yes and, and help us get this program going. So we do have healthcare professionals right here. Not only does that give our citizens an opportunity to have a well-paid job, but it also helps all of us get healthcare that we need. So thank you.
And thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to, we're, we're getting quite a bit behind schedule tonight. So let's move on to the next issue, which is conversation on the architectural contract for the city hall resolution. I'm going to turn that over to Leila.
Thank you. Thank you. Jim and Chris, who are here tonight, you've been patiently waiting. I'm very excited tonight to bring you a resolution to approve a contract for an architect and engineering services for city hall. And I know this is a hot topic, so I just want to be clear that the presentation tonight's just solely focused on getting the contract approved. Once we're under contract, we'll come back with a little bit more detail. I'll let Chris talk more about kind of the process and what we'll be doing, but tonight we're really focusing on getting the contract approved so we can start work. But the action requested tonight, it's for you to approve Resolution 2204, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Bering Architecture for architectural services in an amount not to exceed $399,845. You'll recall this slide from previous presentations. As we start to build our team, we have our financial advisor, John Peterson. Our legal team is headed up by our city attorney, owner's rep. Jim's here tonight. Hey, Jim, Clash, Inc. And then we had two more places to fill, Architect and CMGC. So we went through an architectural RFP process. We did a formal process for this. We released the RFP in December 15. The proposal deadline was extended to January 25, and we received seven qualified proposals. This was evaluated by a committee, which included myself, Jim from our owner's rep team, Counselor Jerry. Um, this was evaluated by a committee which included myself, uh, Jim from our owner's rep team, counselor Jerry Spigman, and council president Linda Kozlowski. All four of us evaluated those proposals against the R F P criteria, which included qualifications, design approach, experience working with C M G C's, opinion of existing options, as well as community engagement experience. And I would say that the community engagement aspect of this and an understanding of our community in particular were, uh, key, um, key elements that led all of us to unanimously select bearing architecture for this position. Well, let's see. So now we have this next piece of the pie and all that's left is the C M G C, and we're gonna be ready to rock and roll. But we get to kick off, uh, design, once we get this contract going with Chris. Um, Chris has a great deal of experience, um, most specifically coastal Oregon. And here's some selected projects that Chris and team have worked on. That was a big deal to us, is having an architect who's familiar with the harsh coastal environment. Has some ideas about how to address that, and Chris and team, um, we believe and have confidence that they, they do, and they have demonstrated experience. Um, they had an extensive experience working in the C M G C prob, project delivery method. Um, so that's also very helpful, is having an architect who knows how to engage collaboratively with a C M G C. Um, again, community engagement, um, informing the design was also a big part of what, um, really led us to this firm. Um, they have a real site-specific approach, so they don't have sort of a cookie cutter, uh, design aesthetic. They really dive into the local conditions, um, and are really cost-driven too. So all of those things, um, gave us a great deal of confidence that, uh, Chris and team are the right team, um, for us. And again, the team comes with, uh, engineers and landscape architects too, so I just wanted to highlight that Chris brings an entire team with him, um, so we can start to get really into the details, um, with these folks. And so we're really excited, I've worked with pretty much every one of these sub consultants at some point in my career and, um, think very highly of all of them. So I'm really excited that we get to work with, with them. Um, just to remind folks, this is a two-phased process, so what council's really authorizing is the full contract amount. But the only phase that will be executed under this initial contract will be phase one. And that's the public process and the thirty percent schematic design, um, pro, piece. So we'll be going through existing conditions, we'll do the public outreach during this time, a master plan for the site. And then thirty percent design and then a cost estimate, and then that will come to council. And at that time, it's council will be making a decision whether or not to move into phase two. If you recall, I also structured the owner's representative contract as well. So that we can, uh, make sure that we're tracking and communicating with our, um, our consultants as well, so they understand that we have to kind of take these steps. I do want to also highlight that the proposal does assume a construction hard cost estimate of three-point-five million. Um, that came from really the public discussions we've been having on financing, what we project potential debt tolerance to be. And we needed a starting point because architects typically base their fee on a project size. And so I just want to make that really clear, I'm gonna say it again, that this is just a ballpark for us to start looking at, because we do need something, um, for us to start aiming towards. But we had to start somewhere, and so that's, that's where that's at. Um, so the action that we're requesting today again is to authorize me to execute an agreement with bearing and an amount not to exceed three ninety-nine eight forty-five. We will proceed with phase one, and then city council authorization will be required, uh, for phase two. And with that, um, maybe both Chris and Jim are here today, and, um, I love putting people on the spot. So Chris, I don't know if you wanna just both of you introduce yourselves and say a couple words, and then, um, certainly counsel, if you have any questions of me or, um, the other two gentlemen here, um, have at it, so, Chris, Jim.
Sure, uh, maybe I'll start, Jim, uh, uh, can everybody hear me okay?
Sure.
Great, uh, um, my name is Chris Keen, as Leila said, I've got a firm in Portland, uh, called Bearing Architecture. We, uh, do a fair amount of work on the coast. Uh, and we're really, we're kind of attracted to this project when we saw the R F P at the streets and just, uh, very excited to, uh, work with you all, um, and really looking forward to the project and to engaging the community and the staff and stakeholders, uh, involved in this. Um, so we're hopeful we'll get the green light here tonight and get started as soon as we possibly can.
Jim Wolford, Clash Group, I, I've, uh, not my first time at a city council meeting, uh, uh, just wanted to say how excited I am, we had a great process. Uh, we had tremendous response from the architecture community. I think we ran a very good, tight process through the evaluation, I was very pleased, um, with the results, uh, Chris, we had very good proposals, uh, Chris's team just had the best proposal, uh, so. And super excited to go with the project.
Thanks, Jim. So Leila. Is that it?
I drafted a resolution, so if someone wants to make a motion and pass it, then we're good to go.
I've got a, a brief question.
Sure.
Um, Chris, uh, I'm reading your cover letter when it talks about site design, I wonder if you could just speak a little bit to what part of this work includes kind of conceptualizing and looking at that entire two-point-six, six acres? Versus just the actual site of the proposed, you know, city hall?
Yeah, sure, um, uh, our intention is to look at, at the whole site, um, we want, we recognize that the, the so ultimately the building is not gonna require all that, that site, but that there's, um, some interest in exploring, um, how, uh, other, um, uh, programs might come to the site, uh, and we want to just make sure we, we're, so when we talk about master planning the site, we're talking about, you know, that full two-plus acres, uh, because one, we just want to make sure we're not, um, doing anything with this project that's gonna create problems for future site use. And two, we want to be kind of thinking holistically, uh, uh, and think that's part of, you know, something we want to tease out a little bit during the kind of early public process, get some, I know there's a lot of interest in this project and in this site in particular.
Thank you.
And so, uh, and I'll just add, part of that first phase, uh, phase one, uh, we will have Walker Macy, our landscape architects involved, uh, in that, um, conversation and in that kind of design process.
So if I could just say something real quickly, having been part of the process. I, I think the reason we chose bearing was really clear to, to us that interviewed Jim. His, his outreach and his public, his ability to communicate with the public in a uh, unique and interesting way was really outstanding, and that's really critical to what we want. Also, the uniquenesses of his design were, uh, were really special and I, and we could, we could easily see how they could fit into the city of Manzanita. So we were really happy, we had, we had good architects, but bearing just really stood out as number one, so we're very excited to have you.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the council that had a question? Yeah, I'm gonna open this up for public comment, but let's keep this restricted to, as Leila mentioned, to the, uh, structure of the contract. This is a big, you don't want to get into a lot of other questions that everybody has, well, we have plenty of time to get into all that, to move forward, but, uh, if you just restrict it to the structure of the, of the contract, if anybody has a comment.
I don't have any comments yet.
Okay, um, well, let's, uh, what we're being asked to do here is approve, uh, resolution twenty-two oh four to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with bearing architecture. Is there any further discussion from the council, if not, uh, entertain a motion?
Okay, I'd like to make the motion. The city, if, if there's no other comment.
No, that's fine, go ahead.
Council Resolution number twenty-two dash oh four, a resolution of the city council of the city of Manzanita, Or- Oregon, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with bearing architects for architectural services in the amount not to exceed three hundred and ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and forty-five.
A second.
It's been moved in second and all in favor of approving, uh, resolution twenty-two oh four, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Does anyone oppose? Thank you, the motion passes. Thank you, Chris, welcome aboard.
Hey, thank you, looking forward to it.
It's Chris, thanks, Jim.
Okay.
Your work is just about to begin.
Yes, I know, we're looking forward to diving in.
Yeah, okay, the next item on our agenda is a special event permit for suit training. Uh, who's leading off that discussion?
I was hoping Joe Cooper was here, um, Joe, if you're in the audience, could you raise your hand? I don't see you there. If not, I can see it, um. For her. Okay, I don't see her hand, so I'm just gonna go for it. Uh, this is for E V C N B cert, um, they want to use Underhill Plaza on June on fourth, from ten a.m. to one P M. Uh, they intend to use, um, ten, about thirty people to show, um, and it's for another, uh, E V C N B drill, um. That's it.
Any questions on the event permit? I think we're gonna see more and more of the, of different type of event permits for Underhill Plaza, people like that spot, so.
Which brings up one question I had, if you can hear me, and that is.
We can hear you good right now.
Well, that's good.
So keep talking.
I told the grandkids to get off the computer, so maybe that. Uh, the, the question, um, that I had was whether we can in future look for some kind of a process that allows staff approval of these kinds of documents rather than bringing them to the full council for, I mean, it's kind of a, it's kind of a no-brainer and, and it would be easier to process it through staff than to have to. I mean, there's some that probably need to come to council, but not every one of those.
Sometimes in the past, haven't we had these on consent agenda?
Not since I've been here, but I'm, I'm open to either option.
No, I meant, I meant, I meant further passed back than, than that.
Oh, maybe, I was surprised we did it this way, but, uh, it's cool with me, but I, I would be fine to take over, um.
And make it simpler.
I'm down.
I can tell by the smile on your face, you're looking forward to making it simpler.
I like being simple.
Okay, that's cool, uh, well, let's, uh, somebody give me a motion, we'll just pass this one through, unless somebody's got some sort of question or exemption.
I propose that we accept the permit by, uh, Joe Cooper and E V C for June the fourth, or an assembly area. Bill.
Yeah, it's been moved in second, all in favor of the special event permit, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, the motion passes, thank you. Now we're moving right along here, guys, and I'm, we're coming up now on the Tillamook P U D franchise agreement renewal.
Yes, and I, I included a, a draft copy in the packet because I hadn't received comments back from the P U D, and I did get those comments back, so the two key points I want to, uh, get council's, um, direction on are, one of the things that Dan and I put into the contract was, um, requiring the P U D to coordinate with the city when they remove a tree that's six inches uh, in, in circumference or larger, and they have pushed back pretty significantly. Um, they do want to take an approach of, um, they're talking about the reducing their regular maintenance cycle to align with the recommendations from the Public Utility Commission. And this will further reduce the possibility of removing larger trees. Um, they've discussed tree trimming with their supervisor and feel it is more productive if we can meet with the city to identify ways to avoid tree trimming issues, so to be proactive rather than reactive, so that was a change that Dan and I had put forward. They've pushed back twice, so I'm curious to, to know if council, uh, finds the P U D's, um, approach sufficient, and then the second question I would have for council is that the P U D asked to extend the term to ten years and not five. I will say that we can amend it at any time, but if we are able to, um, renew it us a little bit more in terms of, um, what we can do, however, the one change we've made, they've, they've pushed back pretty hard, so I just wanted to get feedback from you all. And see what your thoughts were on those two points before I, I finalize this and get it signed.
I like, I like five years more than ten, personally.
Yeah, I, I agree, do you, is there, uh, you and Dan changed it, is there significant reasons for changing it, was that, was it problematic for Dan, what was the reason for making this change?
See, Dan's here, Dan's here, he could opine on that. I think also it's, you know, we are trying to be, um, we are trying, we are being a lot more, um, cognizant of trees and being, um, especially, and the thing is, zoning code doesn't cover what's in the public right-of-way. So that's a different story altogether, so we were trying to propose something that's consistent with what we're doing on private property. It's been my experience that P U D's typically, um, do what they need to do. But we are trying to work with them to be more coordinated around tree removal, so with that, I'll, I'll hand it to Dan.
So yeah, we've had a few incidents in the past where homeowners have contacted Tillamook P U D and asked to remove the trees. Essentially, a tree, as long as it can fall and hit a power line, P U D's like, well, homeowner wants it out, they'll take it out. And so what this process does is helps really establish maybe that little bit of, of what I consider sometimes a gray area that the homeowner thinks that sometimes they think they own all the way out to the edge of the actual asphalt. Put it to public right-of-way. And this, the, the, the core of this is just to, a check and balance. They call us up, say, hey, we have a tree they're gonna be removing, they pick whatever street. You know, I take a quick look, hey, trees, you definitely got a problem, or it's, it's, you know, it's in the right-of-way, but sometimes, you know, some things can be adjusted even on the P U D side, allowing a tree to continue to grow. The city has been always, you know, with a voice of, hey, we want to keep our trees, and I agree with that. It's best that we can do, and so, so it's just a check and balance part to it. It's for six-inch diameter trees and larger, and so it's not really hindrance. And it's not for emergency purposes, you know, if they're coming out and a tree's leaning on the power line and it's greater than six inch. The, the thing allows them to do what they need to do, that's understandable, so, so there has like, been a few incidents.
So what is your sense about being more proactive about this, do you think that would work, or?
It gives us, it's in the franchise agreements recorded, so we can't say after, you know, a, a, a talk with them that, hey, they're gonna do better about getting a hold of us. That they don't, in a little bit, start slipping away, it gives us a little bit more essentially bite to say, hey, you've got to follow the rules that are set forth.
Okay. Thank you.
Leila, I had a question about the five percent, and, um, is, is that a standard throughout the region or throughout their service district, is every community or every city, uh, is it, that number is different?
Yeah, thank you, um, a lot of cities are five, the city of Tillamook is seven.
So why would we not want to ask for seven percent?
You certainly can, it's, uh, council would actually need to, um, make that recommendation, and then I can propose the change. Um, that two percent falls on the ratepayers, um, but that would be additional revenue for us, and this would be the time to do it, and.
So Tillamook Power would raise the rates to cover their extra two percent to the jurisdiction for the franchise agreement?
That's correct.
No, I, I think if you look at your bill, the, the five percent franchise fee is right on your bill. It's just passed through to the individual.
All right.
So basically, if we did that, we'd just be passing it on to the people that live here.
Yeah, well, I don't want to do that.
But you need revenue, so. You're a little bit counts.
Every new house that gets built, yeah, you know, next.
Turn that over to Jerry's new committee that we're gonna talk about next, revenue diversification.
Yeah.
I had one other part of that question, is that true of every franchise agreement that we have, whether it be the cable company, uh, and whatever other franchises that we have?
I actually don't know, it's typical, but I don't know if it's with all of our agreements, but it's, it's a typical thing, um. I think that's how they did it in Portland as well.
So are they telling us we have to sign a ten-year contract?
No, they asked us, and I figured since we were talking about it today, I would ask you.
Do we know any other cities that have signed a ten-year contract in the county?
They said they're trying to push all their contracts to ten years.
Well.
We're certainly not.
It's ten years.
Sorry?
That, that, that's what we have with ecology, garbage is a ten-year contract.
Today's world just seems like ten years is a very long time.
Oh man, absolutely. I, I would like to see Leila go back and particularly around the tree issue, I think that trees are really important in Manzanita, and we're losing way too many of them. And if there's anything we can do to mitigate that, I think we should try to do it.
All we asked, what did you ask about the trees again, run that by me again?
Other than emergency situations, that they would coordinate with us prior to cutting down any trees that are six inches in diameter or larger.
Well, that seems like a common sense request, easy to pick up the phone and say, we're coming.
Yeah.
Looking at a couple of trees, just wanted to let you know, because we've all seen, they come to town and they just start whacking away. We've all seen that, and it, it ticks people off, it ticks me off. And, I don't know.
Well, and they get mad at us. Like, it's not us for one.
Well, you get blamed though, and
That's what I mean.
You know, I mean, I, I would suggest if we, if everybody agrees, you go back and tell them you've talked to the council and we're asking for that that, for them to notify us about trees, and we want to find your contract. See what they say. Is that, is that what you guys want to do, or what?
Seven percent franchise fee?
No, wow.
I, I will suggest to you, just in their defense, that I don't know how often they'd use contractors to do some of their tree trimming.
Good point.
Adding that component to a contractor out there that's not working under the supervision.
Well, I think they, I think they do use a contractor. They probably say, go up to Manzanita and cut down every tree that's over six inch diameter and they're a powerball. I mean, that's kind of what's happened before, I think, we, we had, we've had a couple, Linda and I have been around long enough to remember, we've had a couple of instances that are really bad with cutting down trees, when, when we had no notice at all. Didn't we, Linda?
Yeah, and, and I, I'm really going off Dan's comment that a, a citizen can call PUD, TPUD and say, this tree is dangerous, I need to take it down, and we have no say in that, I just, I, I think that's wrong, and I think we should try one more time to see if we can't get something that, that is not so one-sided.
What do you think, Jerry, you're kind of quiet on this issue?
Well, I, everyone's ahead of me and knows better than I do what the issues are, but I certainly agree with respect to the trees. I don't think there's any need to squeeze another two percent out of them if they're just gonna pass it on ratepayers, but in a five-year contract, sounds, sounds good to me.
Yeah.
I think we have consensus, Leila, why don't you go back to them, see if we can get that language in there on the trees, and we want a five-year contract?
Happy to do so, I will keep you posted.
Okay.
Thank you for the feedback.
That's all we gotta do tonight on that, I think. So I think we've caught up on our schedule. The next thing on the agenda is to talk about the revenue diversification committee discussion, which we discussed at our workshop last month, and I I guess I'm kind of leading that discussion, it kind of ties into our short-term rental freeze, which we're gonna talk about last, but I know Jerry, you volunteered to kind of ram on this thing, and I think Hans is gonna help you. I, I think this is part of, this is one of the things we're, we're gonna do as part of the freeze, is to find out if we can get not, so we're not so dependent on short-term rental income. We've already kicked around a couple of ideas today, just-
We have, yes.
But, yeah. I think we need to formalize that and come up with some sort of recommendation for the city, and start moving in a direction where we can diversify our revenue.
I agree, I, I, I had, I've had long discussions with Steve in particular, also with Chip Greening on the Budget Committee. And with other private citizens, there's, there are ideas out there. They're not all gonna work, we probably don't need them all to work, but we do need to kick the tires on, on all of them, and some of them would involve a significant piece of public education to make them palatable to residents if we were to go down a particular road, so I think the work at a committee could be significant in this overall process, but I don't, I don't think it'll, I don't think the work at a committee will take too long. I think what will take long is implementing choices that council makes based on the committee's work. But I'm anxious to get the committee going, I've talked to Leila about it, she's talked to folks at Eco Northwest about getting some expertise, so I think we're, we're ready to go, but we want to be able to add, at least, I think, I think Leila's suggestion was to community members, assuming it's Hans and myself and Chip from the Budget Committee are already signed up.
How do you want to get those people from the general public, this is kind of a, a specialized item, and you feel you want to reach out and kind of attract people that you would want to work with, or do we want to just open this up for applications? We got some talented people in this committee, if you reached out to them and said, we need your help on this issue, you'd probably be, you'd probably get them to help, if you can identify them.
I agree, I, I want to, in deference to the city manager, who's been a lot of effort trying to get us to appoint committees in an effective manner, I want to make sure I'm not stepping on her toes if we go that route.
Is that a good way to go, Leila, or do we?
I, I would recommend an application process, if there are folks that people are interested in, you know, there's no harm in reaching out, talking to them and asking them to apply, but I believe that it's the most transparent and equitable way to look for folks, so that was in your recommendation.
Sometimes you're surprised at the people that apply, that you don't know and have expertise, it could be really useful.
You know.
That's a good point. I think we should follow Leila's recommendation, and then if you know somebody in the community you want to work with, as, as you say, you can encourage them to apply.
Okay.
Yeah, right, right.
We, any more discussion on this, I think we know what we're trying to do, don't we?
It's a great idea.
We will, I mean, this is a little bit of a backwards approach, I think normally council might charge a subcommittee with a parameter of, you know, parameters of what they're gonna work on. I think this committee might want to come back to council with a proposed set of parameters after we talked to Eco Northwest, I think to be honest, we got a lot of good ideas floating around, but until we talk to some folks that have been down this road before in other communities, I think it'd be easier for us to do that work on the front end, come back to council, ask you to bless what we're proposing that we'll set out to do.
Does that make sense, Leila?
Yeah, I like it, and you know, this is really also a big part of our budgeting forward goal, so this really starts to kick off that, that really important work. And the, uh, working with consultant, that's one of those things I was talking about in terms of finding additional resources to help us get beyond just maintenance mode. And this work is essential to that.
We need, it sounds like we got a plan, do we need any more discussion on this, or should we move on to the last item? I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it, Jerry, with you and Leila to take it from here, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Let me know if you need any help in any, in any way on this thing.
Okay.
We have one more old business agenda item here, which ties into this discussion somewhat. Is a short-term rental freeze, and we have a resolution, and I'm gonna let Leila talk about what this entails.
Sure, so this is based on the council discussion from last month. What I've done is worked with the city attorney to draft a resolution that would freeze the issuance of new short-term rental licenses, so we would cap it at the existing number right now, which in total is two hundred and sixty. There are five that are grandfathered in that will go away through attrition, so effectively two hundred and fifty-five permits. This would apply citywide. The council does have the option to have it applied just to the capped zones, but the ordinance is drafted based on council feedback from last month to cover the entire city. Just to note that the, the commercial zones and the R4 zones are allowed to have short-term rentals by right. This ordinance would effectively limit that for the next three years.
Let, I think it needs to be clear for people, I saw a couple of emails just before the council meeting, which are people concerned about not being able to get a license. We have two hundred plus licenses that are, if someone turns their license in for whatever reason, the house sells, or they just give up their license, that license would be available to somebody that wanted a license, what, what we're effectively doing is not generate, if I understand this right, we're not generating any new licenses in our seven, based on our seventeen and a half percent formula as more houses are built. Is that correct?
Yes, and, but what we're also doing is we are, we are saying that that number now applies to all zones, not just the capped zone.
Right.
Though being too deep into semantics here, it almost seems like the word additional is more, I think, to the potential applicant. To them, it is a new license. But what the ordinance is trying to do is limit additional licenses. And so, I mean, I can, I, I, I'm comfortable reading the reading it the way that it is. But I could see how somebody else could read it and think, that means I can't get a new license for myself.
Right.
So, I, I mean, I'm glad we're having the conversation now, but I don't know if there's any way to clean up the language just slightly, so that it's really clear to people that if they wait there will still be a process of getting a new license to them that is not additional to our total number.
Right, they can get on the waitlist, and when a license becomes available, then they would be eligible to apply for that license. And the resolution's written such that it temporarily suspends the issuance of new licenses, which is an administrative move.
So, I think the definition of new is where we, I, I understand where we're trying to go, in fact, I responded to the two people just so they went into this meeting with a better understanding. But they still had one question about the R4, which I think we need to answer, but as you read that ordinance, I think somebody could come back and say, hey, it says no work on any new licenses. What does new mean, and it's, I don't know if there's a way to identify that or define that, or, I'm, I'm kind of with Hans that additional or something to, to reflect the fact that we're just not adding any more to the seventeen and a half percent. We've capped our total number of licenses at two fifty-five.
Yeah, you said I was round and round about this.
Oh, I'm sure you did, yeah.
So like-
There's some legal in there, I can tell, you know.
Yeah.
So I, I just, when you read it though, it kind of does suggest to you, I would have, if it were me out there not having been through all this process, I'd go, holy Toledo, I can't do that, so.
Could you put something like said, that says not to exceed two hundred and fifty or whatever the number is?
Um, sure, let me see. Yeah, I, I thought we tried to attack it under section two, where it says the temporary suspension does not apply to applications for or renewals of existing short-term rental licenses under Manzanita ordinance, blah, blah, blah. But I hear you, I, I'm trying to find a place where-
Why can't we just say it's capped at two hundred and fifty-five, make it clear that any new licenses have to fit within the two hundred and fifty-five? Because that's what we're doing, right?
Yeah.
That includes commercial zone, the R4 zone, the whole kid group boot, right, everybody understands.
Yeah.
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 And, you know, we still have licenses, we for years have gone with waiting lists, at times have reached well over a year.
We have one person on the waiting list, so I would advise folks to get on the waiting list if they're interested in getting one of the existing licenses.
And we had a few open last month, but the word certainly got around, so the open licenses get got picked up pretty quick in the last thirty days, because they knew we were gonna do this, I think.
Leila, can you just refresh our, or maybe my understanding of, at what point is someone eligible to put their name on a waiting list, as I read those two emails that Steve referred to. The two houses involved are not yet habitable. So are those folks not able to put their name on a waiting list because they're?
They're certainly, they can certainly put their name on the waiting list, whether or not they'll be able you know, their license may come up before their house is done, and then they would just go back on to the list. My guess is, Judy's probably here, and maybe instead of trying to answer the question, and Judy? Are you here? Yeah, Judy's here.
If she is here, Leila, could you ask her to talk about the R4 Zone Two?
Yeah.
Do we have a waiting list on the R4s, or is?
So those are by right, council, not all, so there's no waitlist, those in the past, we just issue.
Okay, so the R4s are not in a, they're not in a controlled zone, so they can just apply and get their license?
Right now, but this would limit that.
They will now.
Have to be on the waitlist.
Okay.
The and the resolution pretty much talks about this, but we're going to do, Jerry, we talked about this already, but we're gonna get this revenue diversification committee going, we're also putting together a short-term rental permanent committee. The applications are out, I think they have till the fourteenth of the week from Friday to submit those, and we'll get that committee going. And we're gonna try to get our arms around some of these tough issues, because the reason we're doing this is, as we discussed last month at length, is to get our arms around the explosive growth we're getting in this community, and try to get a handle on certain things like how do you handle short-term rentals and a homeowner's, a prime example, I'm thinking of is homeowners association. They say, oh, no short-term rentals in our development, so let's say there's fifty homes in there. They, right now, they're getting added to the formula, and it generates new licenses that go someplace else. Things like that, and, and concentration issues that we've all talked about. You know, anyway, there's work to be done here, and that's what we're gonna try to, that's what we're trying to do. Any other questions from the council, or for some public comment before we vote?
Linda, you're muted.
Nita, why don't you, do we have any public comment on this issue tonight?
I think Linda was, there she is.
I keep muting myself because of my, my clock in the background. Do we, did we have any changes in the resolution itself after the input from council, or are we gonna stay with the same resolution?
Well, I like the idea of putting two fifty-five in there, just to kind of clarify.
Yeah, I do too.
It's either that, or we get to wordsmith the difference between additional and new for twenty minutes.
If we could do that, I'd feel a lot more comfortable.
Is that something we can do, Leila, probably?
Yeah, I'm, why, why, I'll look at the resolution while you're taking public comment and see if I can
Okay.
Come up with a number.
Nita, do you, do we have anybody out there that'd like to make a comment on what we're doing here?
We do, first we have Ruben.
Yes, thank you, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. It's been fascinating listening to all of this and, and getting to understand a little bit better the, the needs and the concerns. And so I, I am one of those property owners that's having a house built at Third Avenue, my, my house will be on Merton. And this, this resolution has me- And this, this resolution has me very much concerned. Because this only works for my family and I if we're able to get a license in short order. And as you said, people are, are jumping at the licenses that are available and I don't expect that one's going to be available to me. The reason we did this is because we're in an R4 zone. And we checked with the city and the city said, yeah, you can have a house built there and a license will be available for you. We wouldn't have done it otherwise because we don't have the budget to wait months or years for the waiting list to get to us. So I don't, I don't feel that this is fair. So I, I would ask you to reconsider the treatment for the R4 and commercial zones.
Okay, that's a legitimate, legitimate concern and question. We'll, we'll talk about it, Ruben.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Do we have anybody else?
Yes, now we have Jim. Jim, you should be able to unmute.
Maybe we should come back to Jim.
Next we have Craig.
Um, hello, this is, my name is Craig. Thank you. Hopefully you can hear me. Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Um, you know, zooming. Yeah, so I think appreciate the ability to make a comment here. I'm one of those who wrote an email earlier in the same situation as Ruben, where we're building a house on an R4 zone property. You know, my wife and I, we're, we've got a family of young children and, um, you know, this opportunity came along and, you know, we really, it was for us, we, you know, we're not, uh, this is our only extra property. We're not, you know, we're, we're, we're not people of largess. But this opportunity with it as we, you know, as it was zoned R4 and that we were not going to have to be on a waiting list, which is just an uncertainty and a risk in this kind of investment, again, with the kind of outlay I have. I have six children, 14 to two. And the change in this, particularly at this point when we've invested enormous amount of money and are continuing to invest money for what is a very uncertain future, which has me very concerned that, uh, yeah, that there's you know, that, that, as, as the situation is changing pretty drastically for us. And so I'd please, please, I appreciate your consideration that may be a different handling for the R4 zones. Or for at least, you know, because that was our, you know, we bought the property and we would never have done it had it not had this expectation and, and and now, now we're seeing it change and it's again very concerning for us.
Where's, where's your address?
Uh, we're on Merton, uh, right next to, right next to Ruben's house.
In that whispering pines development.
Yes.
Okay. All right, sir.
Thank you.
Have anybody else, Nina?
We do. Next we have Kevin.
Hi, yeah, just more of education. So I believe I heard earlier that short term rentals generate significantly, significantly more income for the city than property taxes. Is that true?
Yeah.
Okay, um, you guys are also in the midst of this revenue diversification process, true?
Yes.
Yes.
What's, when, when do you think you'll have outcome from that? Because I guess I'm questioning why you would cap at a 255 versus holding the seventeen and a half percent until you've done all the analysis on where potential other revenue streams could come in to help support the city. And I guess I'm confused as to the urgency behind this. When, to the last two comments, people are investing now into the city. And we're going to bring income into the city and it seems a little bit like revenue prevention before all the work's been done to figure out where the income should be coming for the city. So just some questions there.
Well, the people that are are rest full time residents and others that come to Manzanita are seeing explosive growth that is going on right now. And people are very concerned about how many people are short term renting here? How many people we have in town? And are we reaching some sort of saturation point? And we're trying to slow this down to we can get our arms around it is pretty much.
Would that be, so then would that be reducing the amount of, you know, housing starts versus, because a percent seventeen and a half percent, seventeen and a half percent doesn't change. Granted, you know, if you add 30 new houses, there's two more potential short term rentals, but twenty two out of 30, if I'm doing the math correct, versus you're adding, you're adding 30 houses, that's going to put a strain on the city. But now you're not going to generate any income because you're only going to get property taxes, which is less than short term rental on just those two houses, if that makes sense. And so I'm just wondering if we're putting the cart before the horse, whether we should do the economic process that you guys are talking about now for the next year or so, holding the seventeen and a half percent and then, you know, down the road, it's like, yeah, it makes sense. We need to cap it. You know, because I don't know how many more housing starts you're going to have. That would increase the 255 to whatever. I mean, if, because they get to 300, you know, what's untenable for the city? That would be my question.
Well, I don't know that I have a big answer for you than I already gave, but.
All right, well, I guess my comment would, I just think you're doing it backwards. So, you know, I think seventeen and a half percent is a fixed number. You can say, hey, we're going to approve 200 more houses over the next year and a half or two years. You know, it's residents that live there full time, I get it. But you could say, here's how many more short term rentals we would expect based on the growth of the city. Does it feel like it's out of hand versus capping at 255, which to me seems, I, I don't know, I would, I would do the math first before you cap it and lose out on that income over the next two years. So just my point of view, I guess.
Now, it's, for us, it's a little more complicated issue. There's this, well, a tremendous amount of pushback in our community as to how many short term rentals we have here and losing the, uh, the feel of the small neighborhood community of Manzanita. And it's something we have to address and this is how we're going to do it, so. Any other comments?
Yeah, next we have Danielle.
Hi Danielle.
Hi Mayor, hi Council. I, thanks for letting me speak here. I, I actually just wanted to, Kevin really beat me to it. That's, that's really all my notes say. That was kind of my question is, is it really just, doesn't make sense from that aspect. So all, I won't repeat everything Kevin said, but exactly what I was thinking. But my question is, where did the three years come from and how did you guys come to that consensus? And, and the second question would be, what does the city want to do? What are, what are you trying to achieve? And how are you tracking that? Um, I, I hate to think that this is being done because you have a small group of people that have been here since the nineties and they can't take that it's a coastal community and that it's a vacation town. I mean, that's just doing all of this for a small group of people because they want it to be a retirement community to me doesn't warrant making this massive of a change for the city without any real, what am I trying to say? Any real, you know, reason for doing it? So, a, again, questions would be, how did you come up with the, the timeframe? And then what do you, what does the city want to achieve and how are they going to track that over that time? Thank you.
Yeah, Danielle, we came up with the three years is, was a, came from a legal opinion from our attorney. There's a maximum time we can do it and we can chalk it up and cut it off anywhere along the line. So it's kind of up to three years. It may not be three years. And the, the reason we're doing it is in my, this is my humble opinion, we've lost our balance in the community. From in years past where we had a community of full time residents, we have a large community of second homeowners and we have a community of short term rentals. And people are feeling overwhelmed by the visitors, which they equate to be all short term rounds or not all, but, and are we reaching saturation point? Are we full? I mean, you look at Oswald's West State Park, they're so full. They have people parking up and down 101 for a mile in each direction. We feel all that here and we're trying to take a pause and a break and see if we can get our army around it. Yes, we may give up some revenue in the city. We're not just here to get revenue from the short term rental people. We have to maintain the livability of Manzanita. Also, if we lose the livability of Manzanita, nobody's going to want to come here as a short term rental anyway. So it's a delicate balance. We don't have the answers. We're going to, but we're taking a pause and we're going to try to see if we can figure it out. That's what I say. Somebody on the council wants to say it better. Anybody else, Nina?
Yeah, next we have Michael.
Sure, thanks. It made a beeping noise. I'm not sure if he called my name, but it unmuted.
I'll go ahead.
You hear it okay? So my, my name is Michael Duncan. I, I'm a year round resident. I live at 508 Laurel and I have a recently licensed short term rental. And, um, yeah, I, I guess maybe if I was to break it up into two, maybe two points here. I, I, I want to speak to the idea of limiting short term rentals in the commercial and R4 zone. It, it seems like that outright use, outright allowed use. And I, and I'm not sure, you know, how much time the city spent on, on thinking about whether or not that's a taking to limit that use. It sounds like there's been some thought there as far as three years. Maybe that's what helps clarify whether or not it's a taking. But just, just wanted to, I, I think point back to the spirit and intent of those zones and the idea that bed and breakfasts or in, or in a contemporary sense, you know, B and Bs are short term rentals. Were intended to be allowed in those areas and whether or not they should be included in the cap. So I just wanted to bring that up as a point and maybe offer, offer folks to chime in to clarify that. I guess the, the other thing too, I just wanted to speak to is, um, in a broader sense about short term rentals. And I don't think the issue of equity and diversity has really been talked about in, in, in this discussion. At least I haven't heard it. And so when I think of a community, a coastal community, and especially in this real estate market, when we limit short term rentals, we're really limiting, limiting the ability for folks who don't have the means to own a second home in Manzanita or other communities to come out here and experience all the great things that we do. And I, I just want to make sure that the council understands when, when we say no short term rentals, who, who we're telling that we can't, you know, that they can't come to our community. And what that means and, and I, I certainly enjoy seeing families walk up and down my street. You know, during tourist season or, or, you know, the hundred days of summer. What I would hate to see is a, a neighborhood that is, you know, two thirds, three quarters vacant because they're second homes that people who can afford eight, nine hundred thousand dollar homes. Own. So I just wanted to put that out there and I hope as the working group kind of dives into this discussion that equity and diversity become part of that discourse. I guess last thing I would just want to say is I appreciate that you guys are taking a pause and kind of thinking through this. Um, I get this idea about density, you know, we're, we're looking to add homes to our community and, and, um, and licenses and the, and that those homes might, the licenses that are issued might be for homes that are closer to the beach or in, you know, downtown neighborhoods. So I, I understand those impacts too. So just want to say thanks for taking time to think through this and thanks for giving us some time to chime in here too. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, I, I don't want anybody to forget that we still have 255 short term rental licenses. Plenty of opportunities for people to come down here and short term rent a house. Do we have anybody else?
We do. Next we have Mary.
Hi, this is Mary Rule and I live here in Manzanita and I just want to thank you for, for doing this for um, as a council and as a community, taking the time to, to look at, to look at this issue because it does seem like we have exponential rental growth and I think some of the people who are I, I excited to have a place here don't realize the cost actually of having so many people, of having our community swell from 600 to several thousand at certain times of the year. And what that means for the infrastructure and the services and the issues that come up and they have to appreciate that, that there is a cost. There's not just a revenue. So, uh, anyway, I appreciate that you're taking the time, so.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay, next we have Ben.
Hi, this is Kim Rosenberg. Ben went down to the beach. And I, I just want to say that tonight has been full of big feelings for a lot of people and I understand having a short term rental, my husband and I live on Third and Edmund Lane and until the COVID came, we were solely short term. We lived in Portland. We handled it ourselves. So we kind of thought that's how everybody did it was how, you know, we did it. And since we've lived here, we've understood more of the impacts to the community of, you know, ambulance service and green space and just the kind of crowding that, that sometimes happens. And of course, we want people to come here and enjoy the beautiful things that we have here and we want to preserve those for the future. I, I, this may not be the time to ask this question or to put this out there, but reading the agenda minutes for tonight, I was struck again by that word livability and who determines what livability is and what that actually means to different people. And, and I'm wondering if as the committee, the oversight committee that is being formed, how they will determine what those livability issues are. Will there be a list? You know, will, will there be input from citizens who want to ask questions about how something is affecting them because of short term rentals? But I've really appreciated the discourse tonight and everyone's opinions. I feel the, I feel the feelings. People, you know, you make an investment in a community and it's a scary, scary thing sometimes. And I really appreciate everyone bringing their, their thoughts tonight. So thank you for your, your time.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I make a quick comment for Kim and the comment being that, and I suspect that you're aware of this, Kim, but we spent the last couple of years in 20 and, and 2021 going through the process of defining livability and creating strategies on how to improve livability in our community as, as it relates to short term rentals. Uh, I would encourage you to go to the city's website under short term rentals. You'll find a copy of that report. That report includes well over 20 different suggestions and about what kinds of things we should and could be doing to improve livability. About half of them have already been implemented, but they're going to take some time to implement in terms of it happens over a couple of years. But there's also about 10 different strategies that have not yet been implemented. And I encourage the council to keep on that, that there are some strategies that we have not been able to deal with over the last year. So a long-winded answer, but I just encourage everyone. So a long-winded answer, but I just encourage everyone, not just Kim, to go to that report and read it. It talks about livability. It talks about what livability means to our community. It provides a exercise in terms of what kinds of things that, that we can do. So that was my pitch for the good work of a number of people over the last couple of years in developing that report.
Thanks for saying that, Steve. I was gonna say it, but when I saw you raise your hand, I knew you were. Because people knew there, we've already done, you did a lot of work already. And we're not starting from zero. We're, we're digging into the tough issues that are on your recommendation list at this point. It's the way I say it. And some of them are tough, but that's, we got to keep pushing forward. So do we have any other public comment here tonight on this?
Yes, Linda.
Hi, it's Linda, not Mark this time. And I literally was just going to say that I had followed the Short-Term Rental Work Group and their excellent work and feel like they're poised to deal with these really complicated issues. And it's just going to take time and we can't do knee-jerk reactions. So the, the pause is maybe the best approach for now. But let the Short-Term Rental Work Group Committee make the recommendations that are needed to really address the livability issues that are a problem in the area with short-term rentals. And I, I, I'm always struck by the number 255. I organize a cluster with the Emergency Volunteer Corps, which is just the tiny northwest, the northeast corner of Manzanita. And we have more than 255 houses. So 255 homes in the whole of Manzanita is really not that big a number, but they need to be distributed better. They need to have some other issues addressed. And this committee, I really have the confidence will make that happen. And I hope they have the chance to do that work. Thank you.
Thanks, Linda.
Okay, we have two more, three more. Donna?
Hi. First, I want to thank the mayor for really pointing out to the questions that people are asking. I think it is that, you know, you have simply said that the citizens are at a saturation point and, you know, they're feeling it. And I think that that's just very important for people to hear. And I want to comment to the, I don't remember the name, the guy on Laurel, when he says, you know, he hates the thought of people being denied coming out here. You know, we have a huge campground that's going to double in size. We have lots of opportunities for people to come here. And when you think 255 STRs, you're putting a cap on, we, our percentage of STRs for our population far exceeds any of our neighboring communities. So 255 is a big number for Manzanita, as it is. And other communities are reducing their numbers. And I do want to respond to the two guys on Merton that have purchased those new great big homes with the thought that they're going to make 30 to 40% back on their investment by having an STR. You know, unfortunately, a lot of the homes are being marketed that way, especially in those zones. And people look at it as, wow, I can buy this and it's not going to cost me anything. In fact, I'm going to make money on this. And what we're not addressing is that those are huge homes and it's not the matter of just one more STR. It's the matter of those homes can sleep 20 people. It's the density of the old STRs that are in my neighborhood, you know, that sleep eight people, 10 people. These big new homes are bringing in more and more people. And so thank you so much for putting a cap until we can figure all this out.
Thank you, Donna.
Okay, next is Catherine.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Couple of things about the discussion. I do agree that it's been good to hear different voices and to listen. My experience with a number of city meetings is that when we get into public commentary, it, it feels to me, since we had someone speak about feelings earlier, it feels to me that people aren't really thought of as human. They're, they're a short-term renter. They're a greedy investment person. They're a developer. They're all nouns that have nothing to do with the individual people. I think it's quite dangerous for us to sit and think that we can assume what every individual's intention is when they build a home. For example, I come from a big family. If we had had the wherewithal to do it, we would have built a large home because the whole point of a family getaway at the beach would be to have three generations together and that takes space. Everybody has a story. Everybody has a way. They're trying to make their way in the world. And I have found that sometimes the conversations and the points of view are actually quite disrespectful because they assume that they know people that they don't. And I think that's wrong. And it's not being a good neighbor. I just, this evening got a posting from a relative of mine up in Ontario who lives in a small, will be moving back to the small town she grew up in on Lake Huron. And just in coincidence, as I was listening, I saw their sign, which is welcome to, and then their town's name, where you're only a stranger once. And I thought, how lovely. And that's kind of what I think of or thought of is Manzanita. I have no idea truly, and I don't think any of us do, what the actual numbers are for people who have strong opinions. One person with a strong opinion, three people with a strong opinion, depending on how you organize, can sound very loud. And we just don't know. So the council has a difficult decision, I think. Although I will say I support this pause as a pause to reconsider. But I'm glad tonight for people who are calling with concerns to hear the other side of the story from the people who are affected. People who made plans, people who thought they had their things figured out. And I don't think the equity and diversity discussion had to do with whether you can come here and rent. It had to do with whether you can come here and own, which is a big difference and I think an important thing for our community to consider of what we want to look like going forward. Growth is happening and growth is going to happen. The growth is not going to be stopped. And I know that's a cherished dream for some people, but it's not the way the world works. And so the more time we can put into thoughtful discussion and if people get educated, to Jerry's point earlier, when he was talking about the city finances, there's a great deal of education and I think there still remains a great deal of education to happen in this area. If you listen to those meetings for two years, as people tried to struggle with the question of how do you decide who gets a license? Is it a block-by-block thing and who gets to decide in the end? It's not simple. Once you come down from a principle and have to figure out how to implement it. So anyway, I'm thankful for the voices tonight, particularly the people who are most directly affected by this change. And I wish everybody the best with the work to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Nina, I think we have time for one more, if you have another one, because we're 10 minutes from our deadline on the time we have allocated for the city council meeting.
Okay, we have Ben or Kim.
We have two more.
Ben or Kim Rosenberg and then Dave Dillon.
I'm so sorry. I accidentally raised my hand. I'm done.
You're excused.
Then we just have Dave.
Okay, Dave. We'll just take Dave and then we'll, we'll be done.
Yeah, Dave will finish it off. The short-term rental wars were fought just before I moved here. And I know it was quite contentious and then they came up with the formula 17.5%. And I believe it's the R1, R2, and SRR zones. Am I correct?
No, the SRR zone was not added to the cap till the mid 2000s.
Okay, so that's in the mix there. Now you've got, why is this, why don't we just have the freeze on those zones? When you're going to try and slap a freeze on the people buying in or building in the, like the R4 zone, is that, you know, that could almost be seen as a taking? Am I misinterpreting something there? These, these people that are building in the, in the center of town there?
I don't know, Dave.
Yeah, anyway, just.
We're gonna talk about more here in a minute.
And, and one other thing occurred to me, the people that are most upset about the, the impact of having so many people in town and making noise and causing disruptions and so forth, are concentrated down near the beach and it seems to me the problem is enforcement. We can enforce people to be polite when they're down here. We don't have to just take the capability from people to have to live out their financial dreams, so.
Well, it's, it's also.
Does that all make sense?
Yeah, that's part of the problem. It's, it's also a problem in the neighborhoods. When you own a home and you live here full-time and you have a short-term rental next door and you feel like you've got a motel that's changing over every day, sometimes people have a real hard time on that.
So then again, so then again, it's a matter of enforcement of the, the rules that exist and makes sense. So I just toss that out there too, so.
It sounds like we're going to get to talk about enforcement and budget committee.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put that on the agenda.
Okay, thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay, I take this back to the council because I don't want to run over. It's been a long night. I think we discussed some more of the commercial zone and the R4 zone. We have this whispering pines development, the R4 zone. It's almost completed with six homes, all instructions and all sold. And we've heard from two owners tonight and are we going to take away their ability to have a license and have to get in a waiting list? Or should we put the cap just in the caps or just stop it in the cap zone, the R2 zone and leave this, the commercial zone and the R4 zone alone? Go, Hans.
Um, I want to thank everybody for their input and testimony tonight. I really appreciated the diversity of ideas. And everybody's been polite and are very articulate. So I, I'm compelled by a lot of the testimony, especially Michael Duncan. My family, without going too far back, because we are running out of time. My parents never owned their own home. I started coming here 50 years ago when I was about eight. And we could never afford to stay anywhere other than the state park. So I'm very sympathetic to that idea of being able to either rent a home here and just experience that, that kind of time at the beach. Or I'm also sympathetic to the idea of not being able to own a home here unless you're able to supplement that with rental income. I support this pause. Given that I live in the commercial zone, I, I didn't move here to be in a retirement community. I didn't move here to be in a quiet, silent location. I, I moved here originally into the urban growth boundary and it was pretty quiet. But soon after moved right downtown and have been on the main street for over 20 years. So I don't mind people being here. It's, it's actually day-trippers that freak me out sometimes when the town swells well above where the town is at, when all of the rentals are full. But I understand, I'm sympathetic. I mean, I, I know why a lot of people have moved here and, and the, the type of lifestyle they wanted. So I, I do support it as written with some clarity about the number. But it does seem a little over the top to make that restriction on R4 and especially C1. I think it's kind of ironic to think that no one could have a short-term rental on the commercial street. And the R4 is meant to be a buffer between those uses. So I support it as it's written with some clarity about the number. But I would also support taking R4 and C1 out of it. It just, I, I, I don't think it's necessary to achieving the goal.
Steve, what do you think about that? The C-zone and the R4?
I, I agree with Hans 100%. I think that's the appropriate way to, to approach this. A couple of points I will make though, and I heard Donna Miller make a comment about that the homes can have 20 guests and Judy can correct me if I'm way off base. But we actually have not a whole lot of homes that can support 20 guests. The reality is our ordinance allows for two guests per bedroom plus four, which means in order to have 20 guests, you'd have to have an eight-bedroom house. And I don't think we have a lot of those being built in the community. There may be a few. I don't know. But it's, let's, let's be careful about suggesting all these new homes are holding 20 people because they don't. And the other issue that I would make the comment is that even though we talk about a cap of 255, at least on a short-term basis, remember that except for certain, maybe a holiday like the Fourth of July or maybe a Labor Day, not all of those 255 homes are actually occupied at the same time. I don't, which brings me to my other point, which I've made repeatedly, and I know Leila agrees with me on this one. And that is, we are missing a lot of data to make conscientious decisions about where we're at. We don't know how many short-term rentals are being rented on a nightly basis. We don't know how many people are actually in our community any given time. We don't know how many day-trippers versus how many short-term rental occupants there are. Those are the kinds of data points that we need to be collecting and I think we can, whether we make that a condition of the Short-Term Rental Committee going forward or some other effort. I just encourage the city, and I know Leila supports this, I think anyway, that we get on a data gathering mission that gives us legitimate data about the current situation in our community. Because if we don't have that, every decision we make is just a simple guess. Anyway, I support, I support the temporary ban. I do agree with taking out the R4 and the commercial zone out of the restriction.
Linda, give me your thoughts, you know.
Are you asking me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay, so I, I support. Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's late.
I know. I'm getting a little rummy myself.
Yeah, I'm getting very rummy. No, I, I support, I, I trust both Hans and Steve completely in, in their recommendation. It does make sense. I am struck as, as well at the congenial discussion we had tonight. This is a very tough decision and it's very emotional. And I really appreciate the input and the way the input came to us. So with that, I would definitely agree with Hans and Steve.
Jerry, give me your input.
I would, I would leave the motion or the resolution, I should say, as is. My understanding is that Leila had a discussion, a lengthy discussion with James about the issue of capping in the, or freezing in the uncapped zone. And that it was James's opinion that we were on good legal ground to do so. I also understand from Leila that there's been some recent movement of renewals not being approved. And therefore, there's been some fluctuation in the actual holders of the permits in the recent past, which tells me that there ought to be a way for us to specifically take care of Ruben and, and forgetting the other gentleman's name. Rather than trying to, you know, tonight we were persuaded by a couple of individual stories and, and compelling stories. And if we allow those two individual stories to knock us off track here, I think the bold move that council was ready to make, we start backsliding from that. Our attorney says we can do it. The numbers say we can probably accommodate in pretty short order a small handful of individual cases. And I think we ought to work towards doing that.
What are you talking about?
If we go the way that, that's been talking about, then 255 is off the table. We have to redo the math. I don't know if we're going to do that before we run out of time here. Yeah, so I guess, I guess Leila, if you could, maybe I'm off-base with what I understood you tell me. But it sounded to me like there was both a solid legal basis and math that could take care of a handful of people that we've heard from tonight.
Yeah, just to add to that, I did have a good lengthy discussion with the city attorney about the potential takings issue. And, you know, real estate, if you think about it in, in the context of a bundle of sticks and the economic value associated with property rights. And while this is temporarily removing one of those bundles, it does not render these properties, does not remove all the economic value from these properties because they can be used for other things. And I think because of the temporary nature of the freeze, we are able to sort of, you know, dance in that realm. I do, you know, I do say that though, there is some potential for legal risk. So I think that we just need to go in knowing that, but I think all of you are aware of that. But again, I think it's, again, based on my discussions with the city attorney. But again, I think it's, again, based on my discussions with the city attorney. I feel fairly confident that we could proceed as written. To Councilor Spigman's other point, one of the things that I have to do in my job is to occasionally, and I have had to do this a number of times now, work with our staff when a STR fails an inspection, and they are not able to meet the requirements of the updated ordinance, that we do remove those licenses. I'm in the middle of one right now. They're maybe not the favorite thing I have to do, but I feel it's my responsibility to implement this ordinance. And many folks who've had short-term rentals in the system for a very long time are experiencing some changes and things that we're doing differently now. And that's primarily for livability issues and then fire life safety. So those are exceptions that, working with the building official, I'm not willing to make any exceptions for fire life safety. We have made a few exceptions for minor encroachments into the right-of-way as long as there's no visibility or safety issues associated with it, but even those are conditioned that the city can reclaim that right-of-way at any time and thus make that property ineligible. So we've been holding the line pretty hard on that ordinance. Again, there's been a handful that have lost their licenses because they no longer meet those guidelines. And Scott is just starting this year's inspection cycle. And there'll be a number, I think he said somewhere, close to 100 that will be doing this year. And over the next two years, I expect to see through attrition, some of those licenses just be retired because the units no longer fit the definition that's outlined in the ordinance.
We need to extend the meeting.
Well, we're going to be done in five minutes, hopefully.
And I make one final comment, Mayor, and that.
Let me interrupt you for a minute, Steve. Let's extend for 30 minutes. Be official. Hopefully, we'll get done in 10. So who made the motion? You did? Who's going to second it?
I'll second it.
Yeah, we have to have you in hands, vote to extend for 30 minutes. We're already five over, or two over. All in favor of going for 30 more minutes, say aye.
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 Opposed? Linda, where do you stand? Are you with us or not? You have to say yes, or we're going to go home.
I'm with you. I'm with you.
Okay.
Let's just go quickly, please.
I'm going to make it real tight, and that is, the concern I have on the R4 and the C1 is, it seems to me that's counterproductive and not good policy to control the limit and limit in an area that we have not limited in the past. And specifically that we, you know, our efforts over the last couple of years was focused on neighborhood livability. And yes, downtown is a neighborhood. But it's a different kind of neighborhood than being out in the community amongst single-family homes or multifamily homes. So I think that's a whole different environment. And for us to limit the number of short-term rentals that can exist in a downtown area is actually counterproductive to what we're trying to create for our neighborhoods. So I still encourage us to consider a C4 and C1.
Well, Steve, why don't you make a motion with, to approve this resolution? What's the number? 2205 amended to exclude the C-zone and the R4 zone. We'll think about and see where we stand.
I would move to adopt Resolution 2205, amending the resolution, including the omission of the C4 to C1, R4 zones from the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2205, freeze the suspending blah, 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 short-term rental licenses. But we're going to exclude the commercial zone and the R4 zone. So all in favor, say aye.
Well, hang on. What does that do to the math? What do we then say?
That leaves 234 licenses in the capped zone. And if I could offer quickly, what, so there's 26, Jerry, in the C1 and R4. Judy will chime up if I'm wrong about that, but I'm looking at her report. So that would be 234. The resolution is written to be citywide, and so my recommendation would be to add in, for example, in the title, "The Processing and Issuance of New Short-Term Rental License in the Capped Zones for a Period Not to Exceed 30 Months." In the third, whereas, you would also add, "The City Council Also Desires to Suspend the Issuance of New Short-Term Rental License in the Capped Zones and Any Processing, blah, blah, blah." Again, Section 1, "City of Manzanita hereby temporarily suspends, A, the issuance of any new short-term rental licenses within the capped zones, blah, blah, blah." And then, Section 2, if you want a number, my recommendation would be to say, "The Temporary Suspension does not apply for, sorry, does not apply to applications for or renewals of exist, the existing 234 short-term rental licenses under Manzanita Ordinance 1003 as amended."
Those are in the caps. That's the number in the cap song, right?
It's 234. Four grandfathered in. One is a grandfather duplex, so pardon me, the math would actually be.
No, we only, we only have 26 in the C1 and the R4 zone total, which is less than 10% of the total anyway, so it's not.
Yeah, Judy.
Not a big significant number. Any further, Judy wants to say something, sounds like.
I just, I would just concur.
Oh, okay.
With which number?
That there are five that are grandfathered.
Okay, so it'd be 229, right, Judy?
225, or no, 255. And then there are five that are in the grandfather situation. But there are 26 currently that are in the.
I think. C1 and R4.
I thought it was 260 minus 5.
Correct. There are 26 currently that are in the R4 commercial zone. One was just recently added. So you may not have that
Okay.
information. I just added one.
So your report says 234 are in the capped zones, four are grandfathered in SRR, and one is a grandfather duplex.
Correct.
So we would limit it to 229, right? Because those five are separate and aren't included in this.
I don't have that in front of me right now, but I know there are five that are grandfathered.
Okay. I'm going to trust your report because you're really good at giving me the right information.
Five that are grandfathered in the capped zones. And we, I just added one because of this situation, I added one. There were 25 in the commercial and R4 zones, and I added one. So that's the current situation there.
229.
The grandfathered ones, when they give up their licenses, they're not issued.
Correct. There are four that happened because of the SRR zone being added. And there's one that is because because it's a duplex that was grandfathered. And it's being allowed to have two units.
Grandfathered in the SRR zone because prior to 2006, I believe, they were not under the cap.
Correct. So those will go away by attrition, but the rest of them will remain.
Any further discussion before we vote? Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve this resolution as amended to exclude the R4 and the C1 zones. So all in favor, say aye.
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 Does anyone oppose?
No.
You opposed, Jerry?
I'm afraid I am. I really am trying to, trying to be on the team, but it's hard sometimes. Apologize.
That's okay. You're still on the team. The motion passes 4 to 1. Thank you. So we're really running late. I want to give Leila a few minutes to wrap things up here before we sign off tonight.
I'll be quick, just a quick update on the four-dune application that many were interested in. I think everyone knows that that was denied by the state, and I'm working with the city attorney to determine the next steps for the moratorium. Some more to come on that. Oh, this surf. So we've had almost 60 people sign up since the newsletter went out.
Oh, great.
You. I'd like to thank to the public for being patient. You know, we are leveling up from the 19th to the 21st century here. So there's been some glitches, and just to really appreciate the folks that reached out, took the extra effort to let us know, and I hope we've corrected all those glitches. So I am psyched to see so much interest and whether you like it or not, you'll start hearing from me more often. Just another shout-out to folks to please apply for the Short-Term Rental Committee. We've had three applications. With the level of interest, I'm shocked. And this is a chance. If you talk about making change, if you want to participate, if you want to have involvement, talking from the sidelines won't get you there. Getting on a team, working with a committee, being engaged, having hard conversations, that's how change happens. That's how work gets done. So please, I've heard from many of you, I have spent hours and hours on the porch talking to you, responding to emails. The fact that we only have three applicants is appalling. So please step up to the plate. Please serve. If you're here to complain, we'll listen, but you won't change anything. You need to step up and participate. So please do that. I am eager to accept additional applications, and I know that the rest of the council is too. With that, I will also note, I have one, one, one nomination for Citizen of the Year. Being that this is probably most active community I've ever worked in, that was also shocking. So I'm hopeful that we will get more folks to step up. I just want to put it out there, folks, that the only way to play is to participate. So you can't win the game if you don't try. And I am more than happy to hear intelligent, thoughtful debate. So please join up. You guys have a lot of things to say. Participate. That's how you get things done. So I'll get off my soapbox, but I really want to get engaged with some of you folks. And I know there's a lot of people out there who are interested, smart and ready. So please, please join us. With that, I'll stop pleading with people to participate.
Anybody have any questions for Leila before we adjourn?
I just, I just want to, I just want to say one thing. Leila's newsletter was exceptional. It really hit exactly the right tone, and I've heard as well, a lot of comments on that newsletter. So I hope to see more in the future. It's very exciting.
So before we adjourn, yes, it was a great newsletter. We're all doing a great job. Before I close, I just want to thank all you guys on the council for all your hard work. You know, you don't, you're not just occupying a seat or trying to control some power base. I mean, we do this to improve the community that we, that we really love. And I'll tell you, an afternoon and an evening like this is a lot of hard work, and I really appreciate all you guys' input. And everybody's on the team, including you, Jerry.
Yeah.
I'm just glad we started at 6 and not at 7.
Oh, my God. I don't think some of us could live through that anymore. We're adjourned. Have a nice evening.
Okay. Thanks, everyone.
Good meeting.